Like to call the May nineteenth Plan Commission Study Session to order. Please join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to your common objective, which is to stand one nation, under God, and to protect liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Emig, would you please call roll?
Bill Jarvis, Miles Long.
Here.
Tom Curris.
Here.
Chris Rack. Bob Kokon.
Here.
Gary Emig present. Tom Anderson.
Here.
Uh, we're gonna switch here, we're gonna do item B first. Caleb's Edition, general location, one thirteen West Joliet Street. Caleb's Edition, lot one, petitioner RJ Construction, Isaac Johnson. Request Joliet Street overlay District Development Plan Review. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Caleb Johnson, eight two two one Durbin Street, Crown Point, Indiana. And the location of the address for the project is one one three West Joliet Street, Shererville, Indiana, four six three seven five.
Isaac Johnson, one two 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 one Klein Avenue, Crown Point, Indiana. RJ Construction.
There you go. Uh, we are, uh, so if you look at the packet, uh, there is, uh... No, that's, that's my daughter's drawing.
Not the children's drawing.
You got this one there, Andy? At any rate, this picture here, this picture here is an AI rendition of the, the back of the building. What's there currently, if you look at the left, there is a second story that's six hundred and sixty square feet up there. It's a residential rental unit currently. The right is just a roof currently. Well, this AI rendition is, is the, the imagination of the second story going over the whole upper, you know, upper level. Uh, that way I have a thousand sixty, um, square feet upstairs and then I can convert that to, uh, office space for my office. No more residential rental, it'll just be office building, uh, first story and second story. There, there will still be an exterior access to the second story because I will have the ability, uh, I'll have a couple of extra offices that I won't need. I may try and rent those out, maybe an insurance salesman or a, an accountant or something needs just a single office and can share space. It'll be a lockable, separable, uh, type of space, uh, but the, the whole building will be secure and I'll have, uh, I'll have half of the upstairs will be part of my office and, and the rest will just kind of be available space. Uh, so we're adding five hundred square feet essentially to the building over the east half of the, of the building as all. Uh, and then redoing the facade, obviously, 'cause the, right now the facade is all one, you know, clay, that lower level is just the, the existing siding, the upper level is gonna get all new siding, it's gonna be a...
LP smart side.
LP smart side, we're gonna add some of the, uh, Corbal, uh, looks, we're gonna add some trims around all the windows. And we're gonna set up the upper level, uh, with a, with a nice look. And then the lower level, when I can afford it, will get, uh, the same trim look and redo the vinyl siding to be that same siding, uh, but in, in the contrasting colors. So, so this color scheme will be the same. I'm gonna leave the lower level with the vinyl siding currently and then when I can afford it, I'm gonna change that to the, uh, the new siding, that, that smart siding lasts a lot longer, looks a lot more professional, just, just a, a much, much better look. Yeah, better product. Um, the, the other thing, the, the handwritten drawings that my daughter did for me, um, these are, these are the location of the signage that I'm hoping to do. Uh, I have one on the east side, so that's the, uh, north side, that's facing Anna Street. Um, so you can kind of see, we're gonna add a cantilever, if you look over on the left, we're gonna add a cantilever over on the left side, that's the east side, so there would be a four foot low cantilever. But, um, the existing two-story side is where we're gonna have a two-foot by twelve-foot sign that says Caleb S. Johnson Law. And then on the east side facing Anna, we'll also have the same two-foot by twelve-foot, uh, twenty-four square foot, um, sign, just kind of at the band board where the transition from the first existing level to the, to the second level, uh, so right, right above the cantilever will be the sign.
Is that gonna be lit?
Yeah, we're gonna have some illumination, something like, uh, a little, like a little, uh, shine down, hang down thing, you know, so it does not shining out into the streets, but just to illuminate the sign, um, just so it stays on overnight, so people can see it. And then, um, it, it, there's, it's not drawn on any of those pictures, but if you look at this image, I have added a, a little awning over my back door, that little awning roof. Uh, I'll probably, uh, either, either hanging or something like that, I'm gonna put a, a, a main entrance type sign, something that shows entrance to the building so that people know where they're, they're going. Uh, I just added parking, um, Andy had the parking up there, I added, uh, five more parking spaces. Um, I'm working on some of the landscaping around those parking spaces, so when I'm all finished, uh, with all my parking blocks and everything, I should have twelve parking spaces, which I have, you know, there's four of us right now, so should, should be sufficient to, uh, uh, host my meetings and that kind of stuff, to have parking, 'cause right now it's, it kind of stinks, sometimes I, if I get too many people there, I gotta, I gotta move my car out in the street, have some other people move out into the street. We do have quite a bit of street parking, I think there's five or six spots in front of the building and there's some on Anna Street, so it's, it's not too bad, we haven't had too much trouble. Um, landscaping is all staying exactly the same, uh, I, I hopefully won't destroy all of it, uh, in the process. The, um, the only other thing that I have on my list of things that I wanted to talk to you guys about is the, um, what are those things called, the, the sign out in the yard?
Monument sign?
Monument sign. The monument sign, uh, probably if I get tenants who want to advertise, what will probably happen is we'll, we'll make the posts slightly taller and then just add like a, whatever, twelve inch by four feet or whatever it is, sign down below mine that says, whatever, uh, Robert Kokon CPA or, you know, something like that. Okay?
Good. Yeah, that was gonna be one of my questions was, were you planning on other signage on the building for other tenants, are you gonna use the monument?
Yeah, that, I would just use the monument, nothing on the building.
Okay. Questions from board members? Looks good. Think it's a good use, anything from staff? No input? Looks good.
Okay.
Looks good.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you wanna start with the Raising Canes, or you wanna wait till...
I can, he should be here.
All right. Uh, item A, Shops of Shererville, lot two, Proposed Raising Canes Chicken Fingers, general location, seven oh three US forty-one, Shops of Shererville, lot two, petitioner Raising Canes Restaurants LLC and Premier Design Group, represented by Premier Design Group, Debbie Stroes, Raising Canes, Felicia Bivens, request a US forty-one commercial corridor overlay District Development Plan Review.
Good, good evening, uh, Debbie Stos with Premier Design Group. Uh, right now, I am here alone, uh, as you're aware, uh, Felicia, the Canes rep, uh, could not get a flight out because of the horrible weather that's happening, she's in Tennessee, uh, and the architect should be here shortly. So, basically, um, I'm just gonna be right up front here, I've done plenty of planning and zoning meetings, but this is my first study session, so bear with me. Um, but basically what we're doing is we're taking the existing TGI Fridays building, uh, we're gonna demolish that building and redo, uh, the majority of the parking lot, leaving a part of it in place, uh, providing, I think the building is right around thirty-three hundred, thirty-four hundred square feet. Uh, we'll be providing fifty parking spaces, forty-six are required, uh, based on fifteen employees, forty-six inside seats, and I believe there's sixteen on the patio. Uh, we'll provide, um, a double drive-through, and the way that works is during peak times, the outer lane, um, is, um, they'll have queuing in both lanes during peak times, and it'd be brand similar as to some of our competitors, uh, where we'll have crew members out there with tablets, taking orders and those type of things. That's pretty much an overview, I'll be happy to answer any questions or provide any additional information.
You've got very extensive plans here, so I'm, I'm...
Well, thank you. We pride ourselves in that. And, you know, and again, I don't know how many of you are familiar with Canes, uh, I know they, they're, you know, building in the Chicago area and, and the Indianapolis proper area in the suburbs there, they've built several. But, you know, they're very much into the community, uh, they will, you know, support local schools, um, and have fundraisers and those type of things. Uh, and, you know, they definitely all in, uh, in adding to the community and being a part of it. Now, like I said, if you have any, you know, like I said, this is all new to me, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, you've, here's a big piece of property there, so...
Yes.
And I, I see you're stacking, you can get...
Yeah, I believe we have twenty-six stacking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yes. And again, you know, Canes prides himself on being, uh, one of the quickest in the business as far as, once you place your order and you pick it up, uh, it's typically under three minutes, uh, because they, unlike their competitors, um, they do one thing and that's chicken. I mean, you know, competitors do salads and other things, uh, Canes does chicken fingers, coleslaw, french fries, and Texas toast.
Four, four items?
Yes. So when somebody pulls in, they have cameras and then they drop bird, is what they call it. So they automatically put chicken in the fryers and start the process going, so they're not, people are not waiting...
Yeah.
You know, a long time.
Questions from board members?
Mr. Emig? Is this, is this a corporate-owned store or is it an individual franchise?
It's corporate. Uh, Canes, the majority of Canes, Raising Canes are on, um, owned corporately, there are very few franchises, uh, they did have some in the past, but they have since bought those out, uh, so their most Canes are, like I said, corporate-owned.
Okay. Um, where's that, uh, where's the outdoor seating at and...
Um, it's right there up in that, right, yes, right there. There's four patio tables and they will, they will have, uh, fencing around them to prevent, protect them from, you know, any mishaps with the car.
It's gonna be a raised, a raised curb there?
Yeah, there'll be a six-inch curb and as well as a, you know, protect, protective fencing around the patio.
Ballards or, or metal fencing?
It's a metal fence, yeah, metal.
Okay.
Did we not require ballards yet, or we're still talking about it?
Yes, you definitely have to have ballards in there, so...
Add some ballards as well?
Yep.
Okay.
There should be a spec in the, the zoning ordinance.
Out of your other stores, I don't know if you know this, but what kind of stacking do you normally have on very busy locations, on many cars?
Typically, we have, um, like, anywhere between, I mean, depending on the size of the property, of course, um, anywhere between, you know, ten on up to, I mean, some stores have more than that. Uh, but again, Canes prides themselves on, during the honeymoon period, as they call it, which is when they first open, you know, again, everybody wants Canes, um, so you'll be a little busier, but they hire off-duty, uh, police officers and they have everything set up that, um, there's not a traffic jam per se. Uh, but the queuing works... They have it, they have it down, I mean, you know. Um, but typically, yeah, to answer your question, between, between ten, I mean, fifteen to thirty is the typical for queuing.
There, there gonna be a monument sign there at the northwest corner?
We're proposing a twenty-foot tall pylon sign there at the northwest corner. Which I believe there's a picture of it in the, uh, detail of it in the brand book. I'm not sure what page it's on. There you go.
Just so you're aware, that is larger than what's allowed by ordinance.
It's, I'm looking at, yeah.
Yeah, it's on page eight, it's right here, twelve by twenty.
What is the max allowed?
Eight feet tall.
Eight feet tall?
Unless you guys obviously waive that.
Thoughts? On the sign? On the sign? Six feet is the...
It's, it's eight feet with the base.
Eight feet with the base. And you're at twenty?
That includes the base, I'm sorry.
I, I believe so, we just changed it, I'll double check, but I believe it's eight.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Curris?
Uh, hours of operation, eleven to nine, or ten to nine, or...
The hours of operation? They vary, uh, depending on the area, but they have some stores that are open as late as on Sunday through Thursday, typical hours are nine-thirty to one-thirty AM. Uh, Friday and Saturday, nine-thirty to three-thirty AM. Yes. And again, it depends on, you know, what's allowed within the municipality as well. That's their preferred times.
And your product is legitimately just chicken wings?
No, it's chicken tenders.
Chicken tenders?
Yes, just chicken tenders, coleslaw, fries, and Texas toast. That's it. That's it. Yeah. And they do, I don't know if you seen, uh, but they do hand paint a mural and that is something they really desire to have, if it's allowed. Uh, and that goes back to their first restaurant, uh, when Todd Graves, um, founded it or when he built it.
It's becoming more popular with, you know, Portillo's, Portillo's did that, it's, it's becoming more of a...
Yeah. Yeah, and like, you know, and it's, it goes back to when Todd Graves, uh, built his first restaurant, he built it in, on LSU campus, and when he was, um, tearing down the wall, he found an old painting similar to this, but I think it was Wolf Brand Bread or something, and he's modeled this off of that, kind of, kind of brings a lot of the history of Canes into each restaurant, as well as brings in, uh, the community by putting the city municipality name on the mural.
Yeah, it's on, uh, page fifteen of the...
How many locations, uh, makes that?
I think they're up to four hundred. I should know that. That's why I need Felicia here, 'cause she's, like I said, she's the Canes rep. Um, I believe they're up to over, well over four hundred, and that's, um, you know, pretty much nationwide, there are some areas there haven't developed in that they're starting to develop in, in the states, uh, but again, they're in the Middle East and, you know, overseas as well, so...
Do... Do we have numbers on square footage of sign? Or did Denise have that? She usually has that.
Yeah, I believe the maximum allowed is six by eight. You're talking for the monument sign?
Well, I mean, for all the signs on the building also. I mean, there's, there's a lot of signs on the building, which I... It might meet, but the, for sure, the, the monument sign is going to need, you know, to be adjusted...
For sure.
Or a waiver, but I don't know that we wanna go there with... So I, I'll need input on, from board members. Because the sign they're proposing is twenty feet high.
And our max is what?
Eight.
Eight. That's huge.
So...
Is twenty feet that necessary in that location? Maybe it's...
Here, if you go to page eight, it shows the, it's twelve, twelve feet wide, six feet high, and it's, the top of the sign is at twenty feet.
Yeah, no, I mean, maybe they've got twenty feet high at their other locations, so they're trying to attract highway or traffic, or, whereas I don't know if it's necessary to have it that high here. It's the highest one we have, we don't have anything that high on...
Let me, uh... Keep pulling up the TGI Fridays and see what it looks like.
Yep, that's what I'm gonna do right now.
Also, the architect has shown up, Jeff with ADA Architects is here.
Sorry, Dwayne, traffic.
Sorry, Dwayne, traffic.
Where'd it go? Google Earth. Google Earth's not on here anymore. Okay. We'll make this work.
So that's the current one. That's probably, I would guess, six foot, maybe eight foot. Because we just recently changed it to be taller. It used to only be six foot, now it's eight foot.
Yeah, because we require, what, a two-foot, a two-foot base, and then...
Then the sign above that.
And the sign being six foot high itself would be, yeah, you'd be at eight foot without any, without any pole.
Correct.
Yeah.
It seems like this is the majority of what everything's going to now. I think if we look down this way...
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I do feel that they should probably fit within the requirements. You know, I think 20 feet is far too big, and even anything kind of in-between there would be out of the ordinary and kind of, you know.
Well, I think we'd have a lot of people on the agenda wanting to redo their signs. If we, if we let 20 feet, yeah.
So is the preference to be a monument sign then, or?
Yeah.
Monument, eight-foot-tall max with a two-foot base?
Yep, and I can give you the page number before you leave, which it's in the zoning ordinance.
Other thoughts on the sign? I love the building. I love the, you know, the concept. You're on a big lot, and you've got the, you've got the drive-through down good, it's just, I think we're going to have to dial back the sign to a monument rather than...
And we can let the sign vendor know that. I think what, you know, that would be the preference, but again, we want to follow, you know, city code as well. We don't want to cause any heartburn with the neighbors.
Other questions, or anything else?
Yeah, one more. What, what's the Red Dog banner and the One Love Channel letters? What's that about?
You want to introduce yourself, please?
Sure. Jeff Poutney, 1771 Zil Detroit Road, Lakewood, Ohio, from ADA Architects. So the Red Dog is Kane, being the, you know, presence since day one, Raising Kane, from Todd Graves. So he's the symbol for the, for the project, for the locations. And I think you had another question, the One Tower?
Well, is that a banner outside, or?
No, that is, it could be two things. It could be either a banner, or it can be adhered to a substrate, depending on the ordinance. Typically, it's on a substrate. It's like a metal panel on the substrate attached to the building, on brackets that set it off from the wall.
And then the One Love letters?
Yeah, if you go to page seven, they're both there.
Oh, yeah, that's on the canopy, sits on top of the covered canopy for the patio. One Love, which is, again, one love, that's the chicken, it's our one love.
Does this fall part of sign, square footage, or no?
Well, yeah, the, the letters will count, on the building, the signs, there's signs on each side, but they have frontage on each side.
Yeah, they're basically on a corner lot.
Yeah. Being, being as you're on your own lot, you, you get signage on, on each side. So, you know, whereas if you were in, you'd only have front and back, but since you're a standalone building on your own corner...
And if you wanted them to meet the specifications, I could give them the zoning ordinance, and they would spell it out.
Well, I'd like to know where, where exactly they fit. You know, because Denise usually has those numbers.
Yes, she didn't give me those.
Because you've got four, four by eight, four by eight on each side, but, but you're, again, you have frontage on all four sides, so...
And they also have, if you look at the sec, I think it's the last page or second to last page, they have some similar ones in the area, too.
So the, the building is 61 by 57. And then you've got a four by eight on each. Yeah, I don't, I don't think the, the building themselves signs are out of line. I just, the, the monument sign. Do you include the number ones and all that in there?
Yeah, if these are drawn to scale, I mean, you could see in comparison to the building, they're fairly, they don't stand out.
Right. And as far as murals, like, you know, when, if they're painted a mural on a building, that doesn't count towards...
That doesn't count towards the signage, right? Portillo's did this, like you said.
Yeah. So I, I think they're all right on the, on the signage, on the walls and that, it's just, the concern is the monument sign.
Okay.
Unless anybody sees any other issues, comments?
Landscaping? I see you're taking out trees anymore, going back in?
Yeah, we're taking out some. If you look at, so we're taking out the trees, obviously, wherever we're tearing down the building, and taking out parking, and then we're leaving the ones along the north property line, as well as the one, there's a couple on the south that are not on our property. The property line basically splits the parking lot there. So we're taking out, like I said, the ones around the building, the ones where we're taking out parking, and then leaving the three along the north property line, and then adding new trees along 41, as well as around the building. And along the east side, too, along the access drive.
What is our closing time ordinance?
What's that?
Closing time? What is our ordinance?
I don't know if we have one for...
You don't, because like, White Castle is 24 hours a day.
Yeah, I don't think we do.
Yeah, there's, there's places that are 24 hours, so, yeah, the hours are not an issue.
Okay, good.
And you've got your dumpster enclosure, that's good, it looks good. So two concerns are the sign, which we want to...
Monument sign, or...
Monument sign, and then ballards, ballards by the outside dining. Other questions, concerns?
The ballards, those need to be traffic-bearing, right?
There, there's a spec, I can give you that page number in the zoning ordinance as well.
Any other questions, concerns? Anything else from staff?
No.
Looks, looks good. What's your timetable?
As soon as possible. Yeah, once we get everything taken care of and go through the permitting process, it's usually 120 days for construction, so probably first quarter 2026.
Okay. No, no other concerns, nothing from staff? Yeah, if you get, if you get with Denise or Andy, they will give you the, the spec on the ballards and the sign, the monument sign.
Perfect.
So you think he'll be ready, think he'll be ready for June 2nd? June 2nd meeting? You think he'll be ready? Yeah? Yeah? Okay.
Those are easy.
Yeah. Yeah, we can get that done.
All right. We'll see you next month, then.
Great. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, we are adjourned.